All right, call of order. Thanks folks for showing up tonight.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Prior to the meeting, I realize we're a day or two late, but I believe it would be appropriate to observe a moment of silence for our veterans.
I think you're a good idea, being a veteran myself. Everyone, we can, moment of silence. Semper Fi, us old Marines. Right, Kevin?
Correct.
Supposed to say, "Yes, sir." Oh.
You're chairman, you're not the gentleman.
All right, is there any agenda additions or deletions for tonight? Okay, hearing none. Like the entertainment motion for the October 24th meeting minutes.
Haven't read them over. I'd make them over, we approve them as presented.
All right. All right, is there any questions, any problems, any issues?
No, I didn't see nothing.
All right, if all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Highway, Road Commissioner report.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, in front of you, you should have bids for, uh, two bids for new graders.
Mm-hmm.
One of them is John Deere, and the other one is Caterpillar from Jordan Milton. My suggestion is, because how in-depth it is as far as the price of it, of them, I suggest that we table this to next meeting, giving the Select Board time to go over and ask any questions.
All right, is there any, do you have any issues with that thought?
No, uh, I think it'd be good and give us a little time to look this stuff over, good.
I just want to see if this is another Select Board member. Hello? Hey, I'm at a meeting right now, can't talk. Okay, Semper Fi. Tom Costello. So, you'll give us a report then at the next meeting, I'm assuming?
Yeah, and if any, between now and the next meeting, if the Select Board after looking this over has questions, being the open meeting log, can meet with each Select Board meeting, each Select Board personally, one-on-one. And were there any questions, or, and if there's questions I can't answer, the two salesmen are available by phone.
So, even if you have site conferences with different Select Board members, no decision will be made until the next regular meeting?
Correct. Next meeting.
All right, so understood. Public understands that, I'm assuming. Anything else under Road Commissioners?
That's about all I have.
How are you, looking for winter? Looks like it gets the sand pile pretty well up.
Sand pile's been done.
How about out here?
And been working some out back, the boys have.
But the, I see that-
Moving tanks and reset it up, improving the site.
This gravel, the public gravel pile.
That's gotta get filled up. That can be on the list tomorrow.
Yeah.
The equipment's pretty well ready to go.
Yes.
Good.
I guess, yeah, probably tomorrow if they have time, we're gonna put wings on, trucks, um, the plows are all here, ready to go.
Good. Reason to ask, I watch the weatherman.
Yeah, two to four inches Wednesday. That's all I have.
All right. Select Board warrants are right here, members that are present have signed them. If anybody, public wants to come up and see how we're spending your money, go for it. Guests, are there any guests tonight? Yes.
Tom Gardner.
Okay. Tom? Yeah, Tom, can we wait till new business?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, good. Other than that, any other public comments? Yes?
So, I'm Lori Fabia, and I am a resident of the town of Rutland, whose family members are buried up in the Chippenhuck Cemetery.
Mm-hmm.
And I was not given notice to the town's intention to pass cemetery rules or an opportunity to comment, because as a member of the town of Rutland, that wasn't afforded to me. As a matter of fact, many families who have members of, uh, family members buried in the town cemeteries and who have, like me, a vested property interest in the town cemeteries by statute as a right of air, were the residents of Poltony, Middletown Springs, Castleton, Rutland City, Ludlow, Proctor, many others, were not given notice of these town rules. And so, I'm here to ask if the town would consider, or to ask them to consider an opportunity for another meeting or discussion, so that we can reconsider, the town could reconsider the rules that were placed in effect and adopted on November 1st, as first they failed to give notice to many property, vested property owners. And they failed to give notice of anticipated removal of items that have been in these cemeteries for many, many years and followed many practices. And they are overly restrictive as to the needs of those who wish to pay the respects to their family members. The purpose of a public cemetery is to give a place for the dead, but also for a place for those family members to honor the dead. So, when formulating a policy, the rights of the owners of the cemetery should be balanced with the interests of the deceased persons and their heirs. Many, again, who have lawful vested property interests in these town, in these town cemeteries, who may not be residents of the town Clarendon. It should not be this town's, or this or any town's objective to pass a policy based on subjective criteria, but rather institute policies with a rational basis in the need for the overall goal of the cemetery. So, as you can see here, I performed my own research into the state of Vermont's cemeteries. And of the 2,126 cemeteries, only 18% of those cemeteries are governed by rules. The overwhelming majority of those rules of those towns have found a successful way to balance the town's needs for care and maintenance with the interests of the property owners and to permit policies or actions that these family members have followed, practices for years. And rather than a total elimination or an absolute restriction on these practices, such as placing flowers, or, or gardens, or shepherd's hooks, or whatever you, you know, they're all restricted by the Clarendon policies now. These towns have found ways to balance those interests by actually implementing, looking at all of those different practices, and found ways to limit God, and their discretion to remove or prohibit comes into play only when the owner is noncompliant. They maintain discretion to remove, you know, items that have become deteriorated or anything like that, but they don't prohibit them. And so, the point is, what I'm trying to make here is that there are many, many ways that this town can, can fulfill what it's trying to do with its new renewed interest in its cemeteries by the new care and maintenance, while still balancing and preserving for its many families the practices that they've used to honor their loved ones for years and years. I've spoken to members of families in both Chippenhuck and Spafford, and I've been given permission to relay to you their agreement with me and with their request that we actually sit down, have a discussion with the members of the town, members of the cemetery, you know, group who do all the work. Um, 'cause they too believe that the policies are too restrictive and that they failed to take into consideration their, um, needs. And, but they also know that by having a dialogue, the town will achieve what it needs to do to fulfill its needs to care and maintain the cemetery while still allowing people to honor their loved ones. So, that's what I'm asking.
As one member of the Select Board, I can't speak for other members. But I personally did walkovers with the folks that do the maintenance and stuff like this. And I had seen what has been left, probably for years in some cases, where people don't respect the fact that, yes, this is my loved ones and all these kind of things. But the bottom line is, they just leave stuff laying there. And a lot of it's rotted, some of it's rusted out, you know, and things like this. I respect what you're doing. And for me personally, if you're willing to sit down, now this is just me, I'm not speaking for the other board members. If you're willing to sit down with the, our cemetery committee and, you know, demonstrate to them or show them what other towns, um, have done as far as an ordinance is concerned, uh, maybe there's a way that we could, you know, work with you guys and, and come up with something. Kevin, do you want to speak to this?
Well, you got two spectrums here. Clarendon, up until November 1st, was one end of the spectrum, no rules. Bennington County has cemeteries at the other end of the spectrum. You go down to Bennington County, there's no flowers, no artificial, nothing, it's grass right to the, right to the stones. So, it's down there, we can have to work in a vandalized cemetery, and I get to talk to the people working and, you know. And then you got everything in between. So, you know, we took a middle-of-the-road approach. You go drive, you go down to Wallenford, there's no rules. The town clerk would love to have somebody come in and make rules, they don't have any. Build the next cemetery, Scottsville, which is on Danby Road and Route 7. Big sign, top words, no artificial flowers, next words, no trees, shrubs by approval. And they're rethinking that. So, you, you got a whole mix of everything. You know, so we took the middle-of-the-road. Well, I assume the middle-of-the-road. We were in Chester this weekend, because we're looking, we were down, my wife, Caroline, were antiquing it. We've been considering cemetery signs. And so, we looked at, you know, a couple of their signs, it's my deal. Drive into the cemetery, two signs, no flowers, no live plants, no trees, no shrubs. Nothing, nothing, you know, that's the rule. So, you've got a mix of, you know, and Proctor, or Pittsford now, Barnard, Westford, you know. But Pittsford right now is going through the process of revamping the rules and removing stuff and having people remove stuff, and they're going through, so. We took a route, majority, number one rule seems to be, most cemeteries have rules, there's no artificial, no metal, no glass, no wire. So, we wrote that in. The other thing is, they don't, another rule seems to be, people are allowed to have live plants, but nothing that spreads, nothing that has to be taken care of by somebody else. So, I feel we wrote kind of a middle-of-the-road. Yes, if you look at the Marsh Cemetery, there's nothing in there. You go to, uh, Clarendon, go right next door here, there's nothing there. You go to, uh, West Clarendon, you know, there's one lot. I talked to the people, one lot, they're in South Carolina now. They moved down there three years ago. They're not gonna maintain it, you know. So, I spoke to them, I've made arrangements for them, I'll remove this stuff come May 15th. You know, so. I feel we took a middle-of-the-road approach. Now, some people may not think so, especially these two young women in front of me, my sisters, if you don't know that. But, you know, I, I feel the rules in Clarendon are basically middle-of-the-road. And for most cemeteries have rules, the big thing is artificial stuff and glass and metal. Not to be in there anymore.
Bob, did you-
Just, you know, two points. A current plot that is being actively maintained is one thing, where it might be able to be kept looking good. But what we had, you know, particularly in Spafford, you know, and, you know, in Chippenhuck, were, you know, you have things that, they planted things 50 years ago, and it just keeps spreading. And because, you know, people move on, you know, like, if family moves to South Carolina, or there aren't any heirs left anymore. And, you know, so you end up with that if you don't have a mechanism to actually keep it maintained. You know, because obviously there's a difference between, I know you were keeping yours neatly, neat and maintained, but, you know, the problem were the ones who don't. And, you know, the other point is, I would venture to guess the town doesn't know who the majority of the owners even are, let alone how to find them. You know, I mean, it doesn't take long, you know, a generation or two, people pass on, well, who are their heirs, who actually owns? You know, and again, you know, you have other cases where, you know, it is known, you know, and it's, you know, more current, you know, you have more current burials happening and people maintaining. But the majority, I don't think the town would, would know who the people are, where to find them, be able to say, okay, we got a kind of problem with yours, you know, to get it cleaned up. So, basically, it gets complicated very fast.
When we looked at what was proposed, we looked over it, um, for years. We didn't have any, what anybody wanted to do was what everybody did. But every time we had people go in to try and cut the grass and stuff like this, those contractors would, you know, say, "I can't cut by this because of this." And, you know.
Right, Bob. Well, last year I bought plots for, wife and I, my son and his wife, not here in Clarendon. With those plots came like four, five pages of rules, you know, with it. I mean, they specify everything to a fairly well. And, you know, it's a huge cemetery that's active, but with thousands of, you know, old, old, you know, graves as well. And it was just a very long list, you know, of rules. And so, it's, it's all over the place what you're gonna find.
Well, to your point, I mean, you did your research and, and there's, you know, different, uh, procedures that different towns have taken up. But I think for this town, we were very frustrated with what was going on. And when we finally had a, a more active cemetery committee going around, and some of us did some walkovers with the, that committee members, I could definitely see where we needed some rules. And personally, now I'm just, one member-
Speaking.
Been on the board quite a while, and, yeah, and, and I've witnessed over the years, it doesn't, no, it's not every year, but a lot of times when people come and say, "Well, how come you guys didn't trim the trees?" Or, "How come you didn't cut this brush down, 'cause it's spreading all over my folks?" And stuff like this. So, finally, I don't want to say it was frustration, but I think that we had someone present us with some rules, and we acted upon it. So, I think that's where we are right now. I don't know, you guys want to say anything to-
That's just about what we've done, and Mike is right, there were a lot of stuff that was being left, go, and nothing was getting done. So, we tried to do something, uh, I will say, for myself, I'm willing to sit down and talk with people. I'm not gonna say there'd be a change, or there wouldn't be, I don't know. But I have no problem with talking with people.
I mirror what Bob just said.
Yeah.
And, you know, it, there might be one or two different ideas of change a little bit, or. But I thought you did pretty good, especially with Mr. Peck coming on board and really taking hold and which hasn't been done in years.
Yep.
Other than a little bit trimming and stuff that way.
And if I could comment to that, with all due respect, the town cemeteries have been by far improved by Kevin's actions. Interest has been renewed in the town cemeteries because of Kevin's actions. And while I may, um, not agree with a subjective, you know, I, I'm not saying I agree or I disagree. What I do agree is with Mr. Underhill's statement here that a lot of the rules have mechanisms to keep things maintained. And that's what's missing in these rules. So, I would, I would be more than willing, as with my sister, and if I can drum up other members of families who have, uh, expressed a desire to sit down with you and to just show you the research. 'Cause there's 395 towns that are not as restrictive as Bennington or Barnard. The Hope Cemetery in Ferry allows for flowers and shepherd's hooks, and, you know, it's one of the most premier cemeteries in the state. So, I would, I would appreciate that opportunity to sit down with you and, um, and to make a comment that one of the family members that I spoke with was actually the person who's moved to South Carolina. And so, yes, they have since been given notice by Kevin of the rules, but knowing that the lack of notice and stuff was not afforded, they too would like opportunity to be heard, so.
Well, you know, it's, I don't want to use this metaphor, but I'm going to. It's casting a stone right now. Okay. And I think that if Kevin and Heidi, um, are willing to sit down and look at this and then present something back to the board, um, I don't know, that's, sounds reasonable to me, right?
Yeah, I would, I would just, thinking ahead a little bit, they could talk with the cemetery committee. To come to the board, I would say probably wait until after the holidays, because we've got quite a lot on our plate between now and the first of the year with budget and everything else.
Well, let them work.
Let them work, and then-
Yeah.
Don't, don't come back to us until after the first of the year.
Is that reasonable, or?
That is reasonable.
Sure.
Um, with the exception of the work. And in talking with Kevin about these policies, because the notice, when I went up to the cemetery, the notice on November 1st also had a little notice that work was gonna begin to remove items that were noncompliant with the policies as of November 1st. In talking with Kevin, I expressed the concern of the lack of notice to the families and the lack of notice to the town members, um, or to anybody who has that interest, because some of these items have been there for years. And, and not that they've been left, but they're still in good condition, and that is a sentiment that a family member has left for its family. I can think of two right now off the top of my head. One has been there for seven years, and it does not hamper maintenance or anything like that. So, my thoughts to Kevin was that that would be very gut-wrenching to have family members come and see their trees cut down, the shrubs cut down, plants dug up, tossed to the side, mementos taken despite absent an opportunity to know about the rules and remove them themselves. And given that we are coming into winter, I implored on him to consider implementing that part of the rules in May, like, May 30th. Now, my understanding from speaking with the young lady from South Carolina, that she was told that the rules would be-
May 15th.
May 15th. So, with that caveat, that that work of any rule, you know, work being removed would not begin until May 15th, I would ask that that be clarified.
With anticipation of being here tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, I, and I do not have a Facebook account, so I spoke with Ashley already about access to the brand-new Facebook, Clarendon Facebook page, that we're putting an announcement on Facebook page stating that, you know, those that are in compliance by May 15th, we will start on the 16th removing stuff, or trimming, or whatever, whatever. To whatever degree the rules are still in effect, I like the cast of stone policy you got, Mike.
I always need to be a little bit more reasonable than the big brother.
But anyways, so, that's gonna go on the Clarendon website tomorrow.
Okay, good.
Along with the rules.
There's, not the really-
I mean, she was right, you know, when she came up and spoke to me about that.
Well, that's good, that.
But also, I mean, you know, just the, just the, well, Nussman said, go on, Mike.
Yeah, no, I, I, when I was doing some walkovers and stuff, I did not realize what damage, for instance, some of the pine trees have done to the stones and stuff like this.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's one tree up in the Spafford Cemetery, that that thing has gotta be 100 foot tall. And it's growing out a lot bigger than the poles I used to climb at C V for transmission lines. And a lot of the, a lot of the limbs and stuff are dying. Where's that gonna go? Right down on those headstones that are all around there. So, that, for me, that really caused the concern. And when Kevin suggested, and then we pushed to do this, I thought that that was the right thing to do. If going forward, we can work some other stuff in there, or take not as rigid as it is now, then let's work together on it, so.
That would be appreciated, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
That's it. Appreciate your time.
All right, and you guys be proactive, get together and talk, go ahead.
Glad to meet yous.
Nice to meet you as well. Yeah, this is Melissa Hance, she's also his younger sister.
Yeah, they're both my younger sisters. This is David Hance's sister-in-law, works at the town gr- town transfer station.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, let's see how it works out.
Absolutely. I'll wait to hear from her. I'll be calling them tomorrow.
Don't hold your breath.
What's that?
It's good to have family. All right. Going down to new business. The Lincoln Tax Collector appointment. We met with a couple of folks tonight. Um, we've had discussions with those folks. We've expressed what our concerns were and what their concerns could be. And, um, I don't know, at this point, there's two people that are eligible. Uh, it's up to the Select Board to appoint until the next election. Is there any nominations?
I guess.
I nominate, uh, for appointment, Ashley Robinson.
They're second to that.
I'll second.
All right, is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, and we'll all vote, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, it's unanimous. Tomorrow, maybe we could give Bronson a call, says we made this decision tonight. To, well-
Yeah, he should.
Give both, but, so he's not sitting on the end of the seat.
Sure.
Give him a call and say, a letter to follow.
Sure.
All right, and as well with Ashley. All right. Lister appointment. We had the opening, was it last month, that we had the letter submitted that they wanted to, that the individual wanted to get off the Lister's board. And we also had, um, a person who was, uh, or at least indicated by letter, uh, by Mr. Kevin Peck. Kevin, you're present tonight, you still want to go through with this?
Yes.
You know what you're getting into. All right, so there's-
He's heard George's jokes.
Yeah. So, uh, at this time, I'd ask for a nomination.
Now, this is until next election, I'll tell, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, it is.
I would move we appoint Kevin Peck to the Lister position till March. I would move we appoint, uh, Kevin Peck, uh, to the Lester position till March of twenty-three.
When he has time to, to then run for election.
Yep.
Okay. Is there a second?
Secondary.
All right. Is there any further comments of constructive criticism? Hearing on all those in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all three of us have to vote. And good luck. Bob, do you wanna say anything, being in charge of listers? All right, move, move, moving right along. Tri-Land Partners.
I'm, I'm willing to go after the Rutland Regional Emergency Management Committee discussion if you'd like me to.
Um, yeah, all right, we could jump ahead if nobody objects to that. Katie, you wanna enlighten us?
Yes, I'm with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Um, they just started this emergency management committee last year. And it's a one-year term. Um, two representatives from Clarendon would be appointed. Last year, Matt Jacobowski and TJ Lax were our representatives. Both of them have declined it for this year. Um, they would, the RRPC would like two reps to be appointed by the end of November. So I'll post the two vacancies, but I was wondering if you had any recommendations to ask.
I don't. Bob?
No.
Cash? All right.
We'll see what happens.
We'll see what happens then and, uh, maybe at least one of the three of us here can make some phone calls and see if anybody's interested. But you're gonna post that, right?
Yeah.
Good. All right. Tri-Land Partners. Try it one more time, third time.
So my name is Tom Garden. I'm from Tri-Land Partners. I was here two years ago or so, a little over two years ago. And, um, and I'm here for the same reason tonight. And I, and I will mention that, uh, this is respect to a proposed solar facility that, um, would occupy about three acres of land on land owned by, uh, the Pankowski siblings. And Dan Pankowski is here today in case we have questions for the landowner. So let me show you what Dan and I are working on. And thank you, Bobby Ray, for allowing me to present tonight. I'm really busy. So, would anybody else like a copy? So, um, what we'd like to do is a five-hundred kilowatt net metered community solar project, um, on the north end of a ten-acre parcel, um, that is currently occupied by Dan's business buildings. And also, uh, another five-hundred kilowatt solar project that I developed in a joint venture with GE Aviation. So we are contemplating subdividing the ten acres so that this second solar project would be on its own parcel of land, which is a requirement under the rules by the Public, uh, Utility Commission. So we'd, we'd, um, satisfy that condition. The, um, the idea behind this project is that if, if planned properly, um, by setting it back from the road, the, the legal requirement is fifty feet, but it would be set back over a hundred feet, more likely about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty feet. Then, um, it would leave us not only some buffer from Middle Road, which is relatively well-traveled, but would give us the ability to do some, um, landscape screening. Cause we do know that, um, it should be and would want to, uh, put some kind of growth there that doesn't overwhelm the site. Um, or try to necessarily hide the solar array, but would definitely mitigate, um, the, the visual aspect of the array. And that would be part of our plan. I'll tell you that in last week's meeting with the Planning Commission, they asked to be part of that process because they were concerned about, um, being able to see it. And, you know, Dan and I represented that clearly, we're not gonna be able to hide it. But we can do some things that can mitigate the visual impact of it. And I'll mention number one is, is the landscape that we would do and that we already represented to the Planning Commission that we will work with them to develop that plan.
What, if, if I can, what did they, uh, uh, suggest to you guys? I mean.
It wasn't so much a suggestion, Mike, as it was just a request that they sort of have a, a sh- a look at it before it's final. Because, I mean, their, their expectation is that, cause I told them, it would, it would have to be professionally done because even the Public Utility Commission will want that. It won't, they won't want to know that Tom Garden did it. They're gonna want, know that a professionally trained landscaped architect designed this. Um, so I don't think they were really dictating what, what was there. They were just suggesting that, you know, they appreciate it if we would put in writing, actually, that we'd come back to the Planning Commission before anything was final to see if they wanted to weigh in on, you know, more or less or change something about it. Because.
Well, wouldn't they just suggest a, uh, roll a solid forty-foot seaters down through that?
No, I think, I think I did. And that was not what they wanted. I mean, that would be similar to what you see across the street.
Yeah.
And, and they didn't, that's not what they want. And, and I don't think that's what we want either, but it could be, it could be that dramatic.
We'd like to see some hybrid, um, softwoods, hardwoods, maybe thirty feet apart down through there, set back like it used to be, like the Elms used to come down through there and be around. Yeah, you still wanna look through it. Uh, we don't, I'm opposed to a solid barrier in, in any regard. I see what it's done already.
So the, the other thing I'd mention is that, um, having built a couple of solar projects around the state, technology changes all the time. And, and what you'll find is, um, particularly the, um, solar arrays that are on revolving, um, uh, systems.
Trackers.
Trackers. Um, they can go up and down, they can turn. They'll be fifteen, sixteen foot high off the ground. Some of the newer ones you'll see, um, are getting to where they're eleven, twelve feet off the ground. They used to be maybe ten feet off the ground. What we did when we developed the other project behind Dan's barn, um, we did a less steep angle. And, and, and it's probably one of the most low-profile solar projects in the state because of that. And what essentially that does is that can negatively impact your ability to generate electricity cause it's covered, stays covered with snow in the wintertime, cause there's not enough of an angle to make it slide, the snow slide off. But in the summertime, it should generate, it should make up for it by generating a little bit more because of the, the lower angle of them. And that's what we wanna do on this project is we'd want it to look almost like, it would be identical to the same row spacing and angle of the, the solar modules than, than you might see in some of the, um, the, 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 uh, projects that are going up now. The other thing I'll say about that is part of that's happening because there's been a tariff on Chinese-made solar modules. And to circumvent the tariff, the, um, the federal government said unless they are bi-facial, meaning that you can generate electricity on the sunny side and on the shady side by anything that reflects off the ground. And so if you use those, which now everybody uses to circumvent the tariff, um, you usually wanna make those higher off the ground because then there's more ground area reflecting back up on it. Um, we'll probably use bi-facial, but we probably won't get any benefit out of it, even though we'll pay more for them, um, by keeping the lower profile. But I think that's, I, I just think that's the right way to make it look consistent with what's there now. So that is the first part of my explanation. The second.
So they'll, they'll be the same pitch like what's already existing on that one?
Yes, same angle.
How is that compared to the one in the ten-acre law?
I'm gonna guess, I'm gonna guess that the one at ten-acre law is probably.
Steeper.
Much deeper. Probably thirty degrees, which is what you really want in the state of Vermont, Cash, to tell you the truth. Thirty degrees to maximize the output. Um, so that's just a.
You're gonna, you're gonna get a hundred and fifty feet back off Middle Road, right there?
Uh, it'll probably be, um, a hundred and twenty to the fence, the security fence, and then another twenty feet inside of that. And I'll show you the, I'll show you the preliminary layout on that.
This is mostly in front of your house, isn't it, Dan?
Yep.
Yeah.
So Cash, here's what you were asking. So this right line right here is a hundred feet from the road.
Okay.
Okay. And then that fence is probably twenty-five feet.
Yep.
So at the closest point, you know, you still sit back.
And one comment I'll make is it's all square, correct? The fence?
Straight. It's gonna, it's gonna, what we've done is we've lined it up.
With the other, existing.
Goes straight back. Same, same distance from the railroad track, same distance from the, um, subtransmission line that's there. I'll just show you. I'll just show you, Cash.
So much for that here, feel.
This is, uh.
So much for that here, if I've been.
That's the hundred-foot setback from the road.
So long are you gonna be there?
And this is security fence.
And there's, that's the other question, how much more?
That's probably a hundred and twenty, that's another twenty-five, right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
And we're not.
We're not gonna pass that place on.
Line from the road.
Yep.
So at the closest point down in this corner.
This is, this is the last generation that owned that farm.
Probably twenty feet and then you've got twenty-five feet from the security fence to the edge of it.
It is, yeah. It's the way it is.
I'll just show you that. This is something, I apologize for doing this to you again, but it's a quick read. This is the same handout as I gave you.
Same one we got right here, right?
We got two years ago.
Yeah, I printed it.
Oh, you did? You're gonna write that?
We already got it.
Okay.
We're gonna pay it back. Get it right here.
Tell me, Cash, I got it. But this is, this is how the state, um, uh, developed the new rule a few years ago because towns were complaining to the Public Utility Commission that, hey, um, developers are putting up projects and we don't get any say in the matter. How is, you know, and that's not fair. So they imposed this, this regulation that said unless you're putting it on a already, um, negative site such as a driveway or a landfill or something of that nature, then, um, you, developer have to go to the town and, and request that they designate a preferred site. So I'd point out that this is not to say that you're endorsing it, that you're approving it, that you're permitting it. It's just saying that, you know, we'll allow you, the developer, to go forward and take your chances with the PUC and the Department of Public Service and, and the Agency of Natural Resources and see if, you know, and if they allow it. Um, and, and, oh, by the way, you as a town, and this is like Board of Planning Commission, everybody, still has every right during that six-to-nine-month process to comment on the project. If there's something that comes up that you don't like. Or, you know, a neighbor moves in that doesn't like it, or anything that happens, you're never out of the discussion. So that signing that letter does not put you in a position where you're giving up your rights to represent your constituents. I have another plan to show you. And it's because in the letter, um, I represent that I've discussed with you the environmental impact. Because the first thing that the Rutland Regional Planning Commission wants to know is am I having any impact on, um, prime ag soils? This is completely on statewide soils, so that sort of checks a box for, um, the Agency of Agriculture and the, and the Public Utility Commission that, um, you know, I'm not using up, um, the most precious of the farmland, number one. Number two, all of that shading, sorry for so much of it, um, is when I go onto the Agency of Natural Resources website, I can check all the boxes for where there might be other environmental concerns. Principally, I'm looking to make sure there's no wetlands, there's no woods, that doesn't apply here, but there's no woods with deer habitat. Um, uh, there's no, uh, marshy soils, um, such as hydroxic soils. Cause those are all the, the things that they want us to avoid at all costs. They also, these days, they want us to avoid any woodlands, whether there's deer habitat or not. They'd rather save the trees. So they're pressing us towards, um, farmland, frankly. But then they don't want us to go near farmland that is prime agricultural soils. The only impact we have here is that navy blue shading that shows, um, you know, one in the five-hundred years flooding from the Cold River. Now, that used to be one in five-hundred years, but it's more like maybe one in every, every hundred years nowadays. We just don't know. But given what the nature of the construction method we're using, we, we feel pretty good about it. Okay? So that's, that's an environment, the environmental concern. This is the exact same letter that was signed by your board. This is just a sample. It's not the sign, it's more the sign. The exact same letter that was signed by the board a little over two years ago, which is, uh, first signed by, um, hopefully the Planning Commission. Actually, they did sign it, right Katie?
Yes, I have a copy in the folder.
And luckily you will, will agree with it. And then the, um, it'll go to the Rutland Regional Commission, whom I spoke with today. They, um, they were very positive in their feedback. Um, but again, this is the exact same letter they did before. And it says, when I, um, the process is I, I hopefully succeed in getting the three boards to sign off on the preferred site. And then that essentially gives me the, um, the feeling that I can go to the next step, which is to do an interconnection study with B Mountain Power. And if that comes back positive, um, then I will send out a forty-five-day letter, it's called, to all of the others and to your board, the Planning Commission, into the Regional Planning Commission, all the other state boards, that I'm gonna start the process and the permitting forty-five days from that day.
Now, the power line, would they move the three-phase north? Or would they move the three-phase across the river south?
I'm not sure. I don't know for certain. I won't know till I do the interconnection study.
Cause that'll just add to the argument. If somebody doesn't like it, well, they're gonna put all these power lines in front of my house.
Three-phase, go from single-phase to three-phase. Yeah. Um, clearly, I'd rather it come, it move from south to north. Connect it from, um, Alphritia or, you know, or from Moulton.
Yeah, that way you'd only have to put in a couple, maybe three.
So the line that comes down through Mountain Avenue with three-phase.
Yes.
That's connected into existing project and then gonna be across the rail tracks. How much more is that capable of handling?
That I don't know. That I don't know.
I was actually told that the answer is.
Oh, do you? Maybe none. I won't know till I spend about five thousand dollars. But, but you know. They won't tell me, they won't tell me so.
Realistically, whether you know it or not, that bill that, uh, Dave Potter, um, sort of, um, was part of for twenty thirty-five and, or twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five, I don't believe. Everybody's on electric and electric cars. Any transmission line that we have right now will only withstand any of it.
Of enough volume to carry, to carry load, you mean?
To carry the load, yeah.
Never happened.
That line that goes along the railroad tracks, that's, uh, forty-six K.
That's the forty-six.
And then coming down Moulton Avenue, that's, uh, thirteen, no, not twelve-four-seventy, cross-phase.
Yes. And, and we've had to put reclosers on that line to give GMP the ability to shut down the solar array. In fact, if a line goes down.
Right.
Just, it's, you know, the, if, if, if the line goes down, the, the modern-day version of the inverters today automatically sense that and shut off within six cycles. So the recloser is kind of an expensive backup, but it, but it's, you know, but it's a safety issue. Yeah. So they've made me move those. And, and that's why I, I don't know, they might tell me again that there's no room on that substation. I, I just don't know.
The substation that's on Cold River.
I think so. I think that's the one I go back, we go back to.
The seventy, that's the seventy circuit.
Goes up above Creris, you mean?
Yeah.
The one towards, um, headed towards Shrewsbury.
You go up, uh.
The power that comes out of the substation, Cold Road by U-Haul.
Yeah.
Comes down and stops at the bridge.
That's line seven.
The stop.
Line seventy-five into North Clarendon. And seventy-five up to where I live is seven-five-three now.
But in this end of town, they all go back to Cold River, sub. But in this end of town, they all go back to Coal River Substation, right?
That's right.
Yeah. From, no matter what direction they, they're going to, so.
And there is a possibility that you could, well, they can't do it, because the substation is down in Wallingford. Is run with that forty-six KV line. Used to be, I'm not sure now if that's a whole other thing. There's a hundred-and-fifteen KV line too.
It's interesting that you have that feedback, because they won't tell me. They say, you know, give us your application, and then we'll, we'll be glad to give you the feedback. And all I do is give you a preliminary feedback.
In that case, you gotta run it down Middle Road.
I would have to run it down Middle Road if they'll let me. But they may say it goes back to the substation. And the substation would need, needs upgrades.
Well, both those lines run off the same substation.
Same substation.
So they split?
Yeah, they split, they go, they fork out.
Because a lot of times we don't lose power, everybody else does, on Middle Road.
Yeah.
Coming down by the old dairy estate.
Yeah, and that's the line that goes across Route Seven. That's, they just added two phases to it, to pick up that
Yeah, that new, that new, the other one.
Field that you guys put in.
Yeah.
So
It's a different fork of it, so it'd be interesting, so to answer your question, I they might say, my only choice is to come from, you know, from that project up the street to the north and come south. But it would make more sense, it would cost me a lot less money if I could just come up from the corner of, you know, Molton and Middle Road.
Well, your argument could be that there's already you already have a switch that will open on the, what's established already. So you could move that switch so it'll work both fields.
Mm-hmm, right.
Yeah, but he didn't spend the money to buy the switch, so that's not real fly, you know?
Yeah, my project did.
If GMP can figure out how to reach in your pocket.
They'll do it. Well, I will tell you this. I, I've done enough projects in GMP territory that I like to track how, what the cost is interconnection, and I will tell you that a project five years ago that required a certain number of poles to cover a certain number of spans, had a recloser whatever, cost X. And today, that project will cost me ten X.
Mm-hmm.
Not because anything's more expensive, it's just that they have, they can charge me anything they want for that project. So it's, they do fine.
But the thing about it is, you're feeding into the system, which actually builds their system better.
I am, I am improving their infrastructure.
Yeah.
And yet, then they can rate base that infrastructure, even though I paid for it. Which means they get a return on investment, they get the right to bill everybody for maintaining it.
And there was a governor, a couple governors ago, Shumlin, that allowed all this stuff. He pushed it, because he was friends with the owner of Green Mountain Power, which is owned by a Canadian outfit.
Yeah, he, he had a lot of, he had a lot of outside friends, it turns out.
Especially from Canada.
People who are building, built ski mountains, ski lodges. That's everything I have. Do you have any questions?
So the question would be, this last thing I'm looking at here. We have to re-sign this?
Yes. So, the planning commission has signed it, and it will be attached to this letter.
Yeah.
And then there's a, there's a third signature page that will presumably be signed by the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And then the whole letter, I give you a copy, I sent a copy
Yeah.
Katie, but I would be using that as where the exhibit's.
Do you have a question? Did you have a question?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Number one, what effect, there's been going to be quite a lot of these around now.
Yes.
And they're getting in closer to housings and so on. What effect are they having for property value? And probably you can answer this more so than anyone on properties close to them.
There's, I'll, I'll tell you this, there's no evidence that it is reducing property values. There's no evidence of that.
Okay.
And, but, but I will also say, not everybody wants to look at, at them.
Yeah.
You know? So it, it may, in your own mind, if you're in a butter, you may have a concern about it.
Yeah, no, I'm not in a butter, but
Right. Yeah, but, but there is no evidence anywhere that it will have a negative impact on the value of the house.
Okay.
Now, a few years ago, I had under contract a house that was close to a substation that Velco owns.
Mm-hmm.
And I was gonna buy the house because it came with some land. And Velco had bought the house only because the owners and residents of the house complained of headaches and things like that, because they were so close to this very large substation in Williamstown.
Mm-hmm.
It's enormous, it really is. And I, I subsequently decided not to do that project, and they sold the house to somebody else who lives there. You know, doesn't have any problem. But that, that person had to buy the house and indemnify them. I think a substation was something that's
That'd be a little different situation.
Yeah, that's, that's a very different situation.
Definitely.
Yeah.
The other question, in looking ahead, I won't be able to see it probably, but twenty-five, thirty years, whatever it is that these things reach the end of life, what happens to them?
They become what's called decommissioned, where they're entirely removed. And I have to represent this in my permit, that everything will be removed and the site will be restored to the condition it is today.
Yeah, but where do the panels themselves go? Do they go to landfills?
So I have, I have a theory about that. It's, it's a long time from now.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't even know if I'll be around for that. But, but my sense is that all of that material is gonna be recycled.
Okay.
Okay, but I don't just mean recycled as in, you know, cook the aluminum and we use it, the steel and we use it, the copper wire that runs through them and we use it, the silicone in them and we use it. I think it's, you know, it's, I think they're gonna take those things apart, because they're essentially in a reactor set.
Yeah.
And they're gonna, they're gonna rebuild them in third-wheel countries. They're gonna put them on a barge, ship them down. Because those solar modules are gonna last, we don't even know, but at least twenty, twenty-five, thirty years from now, they're still producing energy at about eighty-five percent efficiency. They're still working, unless somebody's, you know, breaking them somehow, they'll get reused.
But there's been studies done then to know that they'll work that well.
Yes.
That's fireill.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And I think the, the carry-on question, which you're probably gonna go to next is, is there any concern for contamination? And there isn't. No, there's no evidence of any. However, there is, there is a popular solar module that's called, that's made in this country, that's called First Solar makes them. And they're cadmium, they're not silicon. And it's a big difference, because cadmium is something that you wouldn't want in the soils, or you know, it's, you know, you wouldn't want around.
Yeah.
And everybody's wanting, well, everybody thinks, oh, every solar module must be the same situation, and they aren't. It's just a very different situation. But those, again, those will be, those will last, you know, a long, long time.
Yeah.
So, I, again, I think they get recycled, as in reused in another location.
Danny, have you talked to your neighbors?
Um, no, not really.
Well, the, the one guy north of you, not Peterson, but on your same side.
Oh, Pat?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure he's gonna be short-term there too. Peterson's moving out.
Yeah.
They got property in, what, Ripton?
Yeah. Did they build a house yet or not?
Huh?
Did they start building a house?
I have no idea. Well, they had one there that they might be fixing up.
On the short term, so that he can sell his house. Are you planning on putting any kind of landscaping on that north side of this?
There's already natural buffer that you can't even see his house.
Grass is already grown up and
Yeah.
After Irene.
But, Michael, I think that's where some of the landscaping needs to go. In that, that corner, that northeast corner.
Yeah.
I think that's where we need to mitigate the impact of this as you're driving south on Middle Road. So I don't feel like you're driving right up.
Give your permission to do that, take out the driveway.
No.
No way.
Never. I'll never budge on that one. That's sort of a lifesaver.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else have any questions?
Any questions from?
If there's no questions, I'd like to, I would entertain a motion to have the select board chair sign this.
This is all the same that you signed before I come on board, I believe, three years ago.
Yeah, it looks like it. See, the planning commission looked this over, and they talked about it, and they signed off on it, and so you know, I go along with a lot.
They signed off on the last one. They didn't sign off on this one yet, did they, or did they?
They did, yes.
Oh, they did, okay. No, okay, I misunderstood, I knew they signed the last one, yeah.
No, they signed this one. I met with them last Monday night.
Okay.
But I couldn't stay around for them, for their discussion.
Yeah, okay, yeah, you did say that.
And they signed and gave it to
The copy is in your folder, Mike, the one that they signed. So I think you'll wanna sign the same one, correct?
No, but I have separate signature pages
Okay.
For each, for each body.
With that being said, Mr. Chairman, then I'd make a motion that we go ahead and assign the letter for Mr. Girdon for the solar project at the Pankowski property.
Wait, and the select board chair sign it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, select board sign it. Chair.
Say a second.
Second.
All right, is any further discussion? All right, hearing not all over in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I can sign this copy? There is eleven-fourteen. Two. Put that
I'll put that with this one. So this is my execution copy.
Okay, I see, okay.
And, and I'll get the planning commission's in this one.
Yeah.
And that's the, that's the exhibit showing that you saw.
All right, and put that together. I would like to have a copy of the one that the planning commission signed and give it to Katie.
Okay.
Please.
I, I gave it.
There's a lot of paper here.
I know, yeah.
Do you have any paper, Claire?
I do. You need a couple?
Okay, so this is the planning commission.
Oh, just for our records, yeah.
Yeah, make a copy of him, have his signature, most importantly. Thank you very much, appreciate the time.
Okay, well, it's good that you explained that.
Wish me luck, because it's, it's not easy these days, you know, there's kind of a they raise the bar every time we go in for a new project.
Well, somebody
Want more and more and more, but they make it harder and harder and harder.
Yeah. Katie, I'm gonna leave these pictures in this, in here. Danny, is there anything you'd like to add, or?
Um, no, I guess just a couple things. You know, looking at whatever's gonna happen to panels in twenty-five, thirty years. We've got a, we're doing a big house in Andover that he's act, the owner's actually buying second-hand panels, from my source down in Massachusetts. So that have already come off houses.
Yeah.
And then I've had a couple engineers, or one that does septic stuff around, I don't know if you know Eric, remember Eric Kruger?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. He's been off the grid for, what, forty years?
Yeah.
Just barely got a meter run last year. But he'd used panels, and we got into talking, and this was even before we did the first one. And he said, yeah, I've got these things that are like thirty-eight years old, and they're ninety-five percent efficient today. And he said, the ones today are even better than what they were.
What's her name, too, from, was it Timothy? That, who was, and she still speaks against wind turbines? She's been, they've been off the grid, I can't, what the hell's her name?
Her dad keeps her off the grid.
Yeah. Yeah. And she has no problems. She's, I went to her house a few times when we were fighting.
You know, no one really knows. I'm, I'm sure, I hope they're gonna do a recycling system way better than they're doing on plastic and bottles. Because what I've seen just lately on a couple documentaries is we send ninety, ninety-eight percent of the bottles, or say we send ninety-eight percent of recycled bottles, only two percent actually get recycled out of the, out of whatever we send.
So you're watching documentaries as opposed to football?
Yeah. Well, I do watch football too. My Bills got beat there, so I'm
Giants.
They're doing well. I gotta hand it to them.
Yeah.
They're, they're a team to reckon with this year. But anyways, yeah.
Both New York teams.
So you don't, you know, you don't know what's gonna happen. But the advantage to us is, I'm not selling the property to Green Mountain Power, and they do the whole thing. That's really what they want. These, these solar fields have allowed us to keep the barns up, keep the property up, and the rest of it open.
Yeah.
So you gotta, like I've even said when I was on the select board here years ago, it
Has to be give and take.
You've gotta do something new to retain what's important to you of the older aspects of the thing. And, you know, how many really farms are left
Yeah, I know it.
Original in, in town? You know, so.
All across the state, same thing.
What's that?
All across the state is the same word.
Yeah, yeah.
All the farms, I mean
Yeah, it's expensive to, we had, you know, we had guys three weeks. Us, there was my brother's girls, my brother, I, and we have four guys that work with us, and we spent three weeks just maintaining, painting, you know, replacing stuff, just going through the buildings. So Yeah, it's, it's, it's a chore, but
One day at a time, Dan.
That's it, that's it.
All right. At this time, thank you guys for stopping in.
Putting us on the docket.
Yeah. Do you have anything you want, Bob? All right.
I just came from Kevin.
I must admit, that was very, very interesting, to see the family.
We didn't sit together. You didn't sit beside the side.
They sat down first.
We'll see.
I can all finish horse chores.
So it was a case of giddy up, go, huh?
Night, Ben.
Good night, Dan, good to see you.
I like a lifetime of barn over there.
Oh, wow, right, yeah. The electrician's finally getting some of it done. Me and me.
Do you have anything, Heidi?
Uh, yeah. So we just need to schedule a budget meeting. So I was hoping that the board would be amiable to having our first budget workshop an hour before the next scheduled select board meeting. I think that we've done that the past several years, and I think it's worked out very well. Um, so that would be on Monday, November twenty-eighth, from five to six P.M.
Sounds good.
Yeah, that works good, otherwise we have to have
We have separate meetings.
Where we are, we could start at the top of the list, work down.
Yeah.
So I'll be with the road commissioner stuff.
Yeah, you'll be, you'll be at the bottom of the list, is that what you're requesting?
Yeah, because I just wanna be prepared, that's all.
You got all your money last year.
No comment. Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have.
Katie, you got that, we'll schedule. Let's get out to the other select board members who weren't present yet.
Yeah, I can do that. Um
Post that.
Last meeting, I think Cash had mentioned that the Alphresha Bridge guardrails went up. And they did, and we did get reimbursed with that through the insurance.
Oh, good. Yeah, they did a good job on that.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else, Katie?
Nope, that's all.
Okay. One more chance, public, anything? Do you have any concerns?
Oh, sir, thank you. I run my mouth enough for it, no?
Me too, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Anyone second?
Second it, say a second here, one, two, three, second.
But you know what I'm gonna do?
Wait, all those in favor of a motion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, okay.